Tony.
Yes. Yeah.
Tony has to undo himself.
I can't hear you. What did you say?
Tony Contreras has to unmute himself.
Oh, okay.
How are we doing? Are we ready? Can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I'm gonna start again then. So, welcome everyone to the Plainfield City Council Primary Candidate Forum. My name is Tony Contreras. I'm the President of the Plainfield Legal Women Voters. This forum is being held to introduce the primary candidates to the Plainfield voters to assist them in making an informed decision when cast into the road. Before we get started, I would like to first perform the Pledge of Allegiance. "A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And now it gives me great pleasure in introducing our moderator for this evening, Ms. Toni Zimmer. Currently, the Secretary of the Legal Women's Voters, United States, current member of the Legal Women's Voters U.S. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, President of Legal Women's Voters, New Jersey, 2011 to 2015, has crisscrossed the state visiting a total of thirty local leagues. And at the 2014 Legal Women's Voters U.S. Convention, she's awarded the High Impact Visibility Award for producing a powerful documentary film called "The Hurricanes Sandy: Storm for the Vote." She's also the Legal Women's Voters, New Jersey VP of Advocacy and Legal Women's Voters, New Jersey Director. She will give a brief explanation of the rules and format for the forum. And at the end of the forum, we have some closing remarks from Catherine Bulch, the Secretary of the Legal Women's Voters, Legal Women's Voters. So, let's begin. Tony, the mic's yours.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, and I am looking forward to this Council Candidates Forum for Plainfield. Before we started, the candidates had chosen their positions for their opening statement, so that has been done. Each opening statement will take approximately two minutes. The questions will take one and a half minutes per candidate, and the closing statements, two minutes. So, with that being said, we're going to get started. These are being timed. The candidates are aware of the timer that they can see, and so we will get started with that right away, and we'll begin with our opening statements, and we'll start with Steve Hockaday.
Thank you. Thank you, Toni Zimmer, for that. And I'd also like to thank the Legal Women Voters for hosting this Candidate Forum. You all provide a very valuable function for our community and our democracy. So, we appreciate you setting this up today so that the community at large can hear from the different candidates before they cast their vote. My name is Steve Hockaday. I am a son of Plainfield, born right here in Muhlenberg Hospital, and have lived in the Fourth Ward all of my New Jersey life. First on Melrose Avenue as a youth, lived right down the street, two doors down from Bernie Warwell of Parliament Funkadelic, and his son Basil was one of my best friends growing up. Then to Pond Place, and then now on Monroe Avenue. So, I'm an attorney by trade, a public interest attorney. And my work at Covenant House in Newark, as well as legal services in Essex County, the core values established there informs my politics. I am an individual that's for the people, for helping those who need help. And that is why it is a privilege and honor to serve on the City Council in Plainfield to do just that. That's why some of the things that I'm most proud of, and I don't see the timer going off there. I see a thing for a timer, but no time. Some of the most proud projects I am are those that help those that really need to be helped, such as the Second Street Youth Center. Very proud of that. The station at Grant Avenue, which the rent there will be anywhere from four hundred to thirteen hundred dollars. And if you make over a certain income, you can't stay there. As well as--
Thank you, Steve.
Is that it? I couldn't see the-- It's like pink. Oh, it's a color system, I see.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, I look forward to the discussion this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. David, David Rutherford?
I want to thank everyone for tuning in tonight. My name is David Rutherford. I'm running for City Council at large. I was born and raised here in Plainfield, where I'm a lifelong resident, aside from a few years in college. I have a background in high-density, transit-oriented architecture, which I think is relevant. And for the last year and a half, I've worked as a writer in advertising. Growing up in Plainfield, my mother always had me involved in municipal politics. She told, back before I had a choice, she told me change starts at home, and politics is local. I think the first campaign I remember was in maybe 1989, Harold Mitchell. I was three years old, but I do remember it. As an adult on my own, I've been involved in Plainfield since around 2012, not too long after I finished college. The next year, I started blogging, mainly human interest and cultural stories, interviews, also movement stories, political takes, photo journals. And writing that blog in Plainfield was rewarding in another way, too, because it kind of propelled me into a career as a writer. So, I always thank the readers in Plainfield and the people I interacted with for encouraging me. In 2014, I was the youngest person elected to the Board of Education, where I served one term until around 2017. And the decision to run for City Council is not one that I took lightly at all. I made this decision out of malcontent unhappiness with what I see happening in our city. And I also think that we're a city at a crossroads. Developers want to build near every single train station in our area. Who do we let come into our city? What do the people get back for it? The answers to these questions, we will live with for decades. So, I'm happy to be here. I thank everyone for listening, and I hope we have a robust discussion about all the issues affecting Plainfield from an municipal government standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And Emily Morgan? Yep, you're--
Okay, I'll start again. Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Morgan, and I am the candidate of choice for the Third Ward Councilwoman for the City of Plainfield, New Jersey. I'd like to give a special thank you to the Legal Women Voters for organizing and hosting this important event. I am a retired accountant. I am a graduate of Brussels University, Newark College of Arts and Sciences, where I earned a bachelor's degree in accounting and economics. I've been a proud resident of Plainfield's Third Ward for twenty-plus years. I believe in a beautiful, clean, united, responsible Plainfield, where quality of life is the central focus of city government. I believe that this can be accomplished when David Rutherford and I are elected to service members of the Plainfield City Council on Tuesday, July 7, replacing the incumbents who have rubber stamped and in any and all projects presented by Mayor Matt. We promise to ensure that Plainfield's residents, our children, our youth, our seniors, our employees, and all of our citizens will be first and foremost in all considerations and policy-making decisions. As areas of Plainfield are being threatened with congestion and overcrowding due to so-called developments without community involvement, without traffic studies, and the consideration of the quality of life. Are we willing to sacrifice quality of life for development? I believe the community should have a set. A strong and responsive city government will produce a better quality of life for everyone. Thank you.
Tony? Zimmer, please check your chat box.
Robert Graham?
Hello, everyone. I am Robert K. Graham. I moved to Plainfield in 2004. And in 2006, 2007, I became involved within the city of Plainfield. I am a Realtor. That is my profession. I also own a real estate brokerage here in the city of Plainfield. In 2006, 2007, I got involved with the Plainfield Chamber of Commerce. Through my volunteering, I became the Events Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce. I helped to put on the free concerts that you see on South Avenue, now at Mill Campbell Field. I am the producer of the Plainfield Idol Contest. I'm also on the Plainfield Zoning Board of Adjustments. My volunteerism that I do is not part of my profession. I do not get paid for what I do. When I was growing up in the city of Newark, I lived in poverty. I got bullied. My mother put me in martial arts. I learned to stand up for myself. I was racially profiled. I was shot by a police officer. But because I-- Because of that situation, I do not hate police. As a matter of fact, it took me a long time to actually tell my story because I didn't want people to feel sorry for me, and I didn't want people to rush to judgment. All that I do for my community is simply because I want the very best for my community. I am someone that can relate to the whole community, no matter what your challenges are, no matter what your challenges were. I am someone that has gone through what you have gone through. I am someone that has probably made the same mistakes that you have made and your children have made. I am someone that your children can look up to, that they can talk to, and that they can see themselves in. And I'm someone that wants to teach our children of Plainfield that they can overcome any challenge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Charles, Ms. McCray, before you begin, I'm going to ask you to take your background down because it is considered to be electioneering when you have your campaign material behind you that way. So, if you could do that, I'd really appreciate it. We can wait, you know, a minute or so for you to do that. Unmute. Can you unmute him?
Working on it.
I'm just trying to find--
Oh, okay. Okay, all right. So, I don't know if you heard what I said, but--
Yeah.
I was asking-- Oh, okay.
I'm looking for it now.
Okay.
Forgot where it was. It's-- You know--
Are you able, are you using a laptop computer right now?
Yes, I am.
Are you able to just swivel it away from-- From that?
No, that's the background.
Yeah, it's gonna stay there no matter what.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the background of the-- Of the screen.
All right, if you click the arrow near the "Stop Video", and then "Video Settings," you can get rid of it.
Okay. Which one is it now?
Then you can go to "Virtual Background" after the video settings. Go to "Virtual Background."
Yeah, I'm looking for it now. Doesn't have-- Virtual backgrounds. I'm looking for the virtual background now. Unfortunately. Maybe if I do this. I don't see virtual background.
Okay. What you can do in the meantime is you can just--
Oh, wait.
What?
In the event that that cannot happen, can the rest of the candidates put their political backgrounds and their background? So--
No, I'll take this all.
We're not doing that.
Okay.
Okay, what you can do--
I got it. I got it. I got it.
Okay, great. Great. Wonderful. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Now, you can take a deep breath and begin your opening statement.
Okay. "I would like to thank the Legal Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm Charles McCray, thirty-seven-year resident here of Plainfield, who currently represents you as the Third Ward Councilman. I would like to take a moment to thank my family, who supports me through all my endeavors. I previously served as the President of the Council and continue to serve the Council Economic Development Subcommittee and the Council's representative on the Planning Board. This year, I was appointed the Chair of the Council's Finance Subcommittee and has been able to work to bring a zero-based tax budget to the people of Plainfield. My involvement on these committees has enabled me to work collaboratively with the administration, my council colleagues, county, state, and federal elected officials to make a phenomenal impact in the city of Plainfield. We have been able to pave over one hundred and nineteen roads, improve Sidle Field with the Turf Field, Cedar Brook Park with the Turf Field, and Rushmore Field with the Turf Field to service our youth. We have developed a new South Second Street youth facility, started the Quinn Project on South Avenue, the station at Grant Avenue, which is only the beginning of projects which will stabilize our taxes and keep moving our city forward. I am grateful to our partners, who share the same vision, so we can continue to work for you. And I welcome the opportunity to hear from my opponent what she has specifically done to help improve our school system, especially in her role as past president and currently as Finance Chair of the School Board of Education. Thank you."
Very good. Thank you. All right, now we're going to start with the questions that we've received from Plainfield citizens. And we're going to start with David. The first question goes to you. "How do you feel about defunding the Police Department? Do you think we pour too much money into our Police Department currently? And please elaborate and be specific on that."
Well, I think when you start the discussion out talking about money, it kind of misses the mark, and I'll explain. It's about the role of police. Now, if that ends up defunding police, then that may be it. But it can't just be, like in L.A., they transferred a hundred million out. It just can't be lessening the budget. What is the role? When there's a homeless person, do police respond to that? When it's domestic dispute, when it's mental health? If police are a hammer, do you use that in all of these situations? Or do you have other professionals that respond to some things? And then you lessen the role of police. And this is a conversation, this is not just a Plainfield conversation. This is a conversation we're going to be having nationally about the role of police in all of our communities, Plainfield included. And I'm going to sound like Mr. Graham, we gotta listen. This is going to be a discussion that everyone has. And, but I believe when you start it with "defund" and look at budgets first, it really misses the mark versus when you look at what is the function of police and what will it be moving forward? The young man who was killed in Atlanta at the Wendy's, if a police didn't respond to that incident, he'd be alive right now. So, it's something we definitely have to look at.
Thank you. Emily?
Yes, I-- In reference to the question concerning the Police Department, I think that one of the first steps we can do to help our Police Department serve our citizens more efficiently is to develop a Police Review Board, which would have members of the community on that advisory board, and they will be able to look at the outcomes of incidents that occur in the district. We can oversee the process of how our police serve our citizens. We've had incidents that occurred about a year ago in the Police Department where someone who was actually in a jail cell in our district, in the Police Department, was left. He asked for help concerning-- He was having a medical emergency, and he did not get any assistance from the officers who were on staff at that time. And there was an issue with them accounting for the fact that they did not get back to him to help him. So, we need to have an opportunity for citizens where we are aware of this type of situation. We will be able to do an investigation and find out how that happened. There's a recent incident where a citizen was arrested. And in the melee of his being arrested, his arm was broken. He was taken to the police precinct. He was there for three hours before he received any medical attention. These are some of the things that occur in our city with our Police Department. And we need to have some oversight from community members. So, when things like this happen, we are sure that we did not do any harm to our citizens, whether they're in the jail or on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Steve?
Yes. So, defunding the police is-- Is-- I think purposely has a sound that gets your attention in terms of what it actually means. But I do agree that the city needs to be intelligent on how it allocates its resources. So, I think-- Plain, you know, every city is not the same. So, defunding the police in one city might mean something different in an entire city based on what its city needs. Here in Plainfield, we have officers that are already doing some of those things, like, for example, with our Queen City Mentoring Academy, where they mentor individuals from the community, young boys and girls. But they do a wonderful job with that. You know, not typically a police function, but something that the police are doing to continue to train up the next generation. But there's certainly plenty of opportunity for us as a council and also for the police to explore more opportunities where either police can play a function in-- In an area where they don't typically do, that is low harm, low risk, without guns, and also instances where that police handle that could be handled by city workers or someone else that-- You know, when the situation doesn't have to be escalated.
Thank you, Steve. Charles?
Okay. In reference to the Police Department, here in Plainfield, we have a unique situation. Our Police Department has just gone through an extensive review and certification process, which examined their way they operate and to be certified by the League-- I mean, by the Chiefs Association as being a top-notch police force. Given that, there's still room in which we can have a dialogue and interact with our Police Department to ensure that they uphold the standards and are communicating with the community in such a way that it is not an adverse situation that they find themselves in. We can all point at some point in time at different instances that things happen with the Police Department. But we also must keep in mind that we need to be able to talk and educate and train and work with our Police Department, which, as Steve just mentioned, serves us through our mentoring academy to get that community relationship going between the Police Department and the community.
Thank you. Robert?
All right, so to answer the question, my answer would be no. But I always ask the question back when people come to me with that same proposition. I ask, "Well, when is the last time an unarmed black man was shot by a police officer?" And I say, "Before you answer that, I'm not talking about just a white police officer, any police officer. When is the last time an unarmed black man was shot by a Plainfield police officer?" See, because we're local. We're not a national council. We're a council for the city of Plainfield. And so, I think that we need to pay attention to what doesn't happen in Plainfield. Our young black youth do not get profiled in the city in Plainfield like they would in another municipality. We need more programs that are run by the Police Department. We need to bring back the Police Athletic League. We need to have the Police Department run a boxing program. We need to have the Police Department run a martial arts program. We need to take these kids out and compete in national tournaments, not so that they can be the best fighters, so that they can have that sense of experience as to what it feels like to perform on a national stage in front of people, in front of strangers. And they can learn from their mistakes as they go out and go into these tournaments and compete. And it's not about the fight. It's about developing character. So, more funds need to be put into our community. Our police need to live in our community. Our police officers need to look like our community. So, that's my take on that question.
Okay, thank you. Steve, you wanted to comment on that?
Yeah, I did. Just a little bit more about the accreditation. You know, I give a lot of props to our Police Department for becoming accredited. We're on one of only, like, five municipalities in the state that has that accreditation. But I think it's important even to go beyond that. We need to be discussing with the accreditation boards what it means to be accredited now, especially in light of the killing of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, et cetera, et cetera, especially as it relates to the use of force. All right, so I think that those standards need to be adjusted.
Okay, and David, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I just hope we don't get into the habit of not recognizing when things do go wrong in Plainfield. Just a week or two ago, we had a young man whose arm was broken. And as someone born and raised here, I've had negative interactions with police. I've had cousins and friends and such arrested for loitering and things like that. So, it's not just someone else's problem. It's also our problem to fix here in Plainfield.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, we're going to go on to the next question, which is like 180 degrees, pretty much. I wanted to know if, Emily, you could explain in detail how the municipal budget went from an eighteen-million-dollar deficit to a zero percent tax increase? And what areas of the city budget do you think should be looked at next year in order to achieve a sustained zero tax increase? And at any time, please, you can ask me to repeat a question if you need me to. No problem.
Okay. This is in reference to this budget that was just recently passed, and it-- With the zero increase. I think one of the problems with that is that-- I think one of the problems with that is that uh the only way that the city council and the mayor were able to reduce the uh tax increase or not have a tax increase this year was because they took services from children. We will not have us our summer youth program this year. We will not have recreational programs this year. And some may say it's because of the COVID. But we know that in the Board of Education, we had to provide virtual learning for students. So I believe that we should be uh concerned about making, developing a mechanism so that our children can participate in summer programs, recreational programs and and summer camps. And so that we can provide jobs to the students who year after year, especially high school students, expect to have an opportunity to work in the summer youth employment program. So that that's one of the reasons I think the city was able to not have a uh increase for the taxes this year because they removed some programs that were essential to the students or to our uh population of young people, from the teenagers in high school to the young people who would participate in the recreational programs.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Can you answer that?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Um you know, I'm I'm really proud of the way uh that we took a a deep look at the budget uh to get it to a uh zero percent uh tax increase. So you know, the 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 question kind of was a was was not uh uh and I don't I I think it assumed some things, the eighteen million dollars and the zero percent. You know, those don't necessarily work together. Um the zero percent increase is is just that we got expenses down enough that we that there does not need to be any additional municipal assessment uh uh over what it is uh from last year. So uh you know, there's still the school board after out there uh as well as the county that has to decide what their increase is. I believe the county is gonna be zero, and I'm hopeful that the uh school board uh is zero a- as well. Um and but uh E- Emily is correct, we we did have to uh we are canceling things, but COVID has had a very disproportionate effect on the community like Plainfield. And so we know we're gonna have to uh cut those things. But the way that we move forward and reduce taxes uh in in the future is through our aggressive development projects, bringing in taxes for them to stabilize the tax rates.
Thank you. Charles?
Well, I've I got it. Um I have to echo some of what Steve said. The eighteen million dollars, I don't know where we came from an eighteen million dollar deficit. But to get to zero, we had to aggressively go in and look at the budget for all areas to make adjustments. Um that given the fact that zero, we still don't know what the county and at the last board meeting of the Board of Ed, I believe they raised the taxes six percent, if I was correct. And I don't know what happened at last night's board meeting. But to tell us that, you know, the future, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but we know that being fiscally responsible and bringing developers in will offset any tax increases that we may foresee in the future. And some of the projects we have going on now, when they come to fruition, which should be next year, will greatly offset any tax increase that we might have to incur.
Okay, thank you. Robert?
I just have to give credit where credit is due. If I were on city council, I would certainly be looking to bring costs down. I would certainly look at every line item. I uh would 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 certainly, it's unfortunate that we did have, we're we're in the pandemic. And so a lot of programs could not continue. Even if we uh said that, you know, we're gonna continue with these programs anyway, who would show up? So it would not be a good return on the investment because, you know, it just would be irresponsible uh for us to go forward with the program. So perhaps, you know, uh we 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 did good on that aspect. But to look at every line item, to make sure that you are listening not only to the loudest voices, but you're listening to every voice. And you're making sure that everyone's concerns are just as important. No one's concern is more important than anyone else's. So I I I don't really have a long extended answer for this. I just have to give credit where credit is due to pass a a budget of that magnitude and not increase my taxes and not compromise the the safety of my community. Um I I can't, I I really, I can't go against, you know, uh what what when someone's doing something uh that makes me happy as a taxpayer.
Thank you. David?
Yes, uh I know that most of the um most of the savings this year regarding taxes, um the lack of an increase, it's based on the fact that we, those are only acceptable and maybe not even quite acceptable. But because of COVID, we're talking about the youth programs, summer employment. Um so I don't see that as a long-term set tax solution. Uh we still have cabinet members, for example, driving around in big, expensive, gas-guzzling Chevy Tahos. Seven of them, that's what's happening right now. Um and the city council still wants to go out for bid for a pedestrian mall that costs two point three million dollars. We don't have a a parking study for this mall or or anything else that the administration told us that they pretty much don't know a whole lot about this project. Eighty-six percent of them fail, yet we're talking about sustainable tax moving forward. They still wanna do it, even if it's not in this year's budget.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna start with um Steve on this. Pardon me?
I have a rebuttal.
I didn't see your hand.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um to just clarify, the pedestrian mall was taken off of the table and that it was not be brought back as a tax um initiative. So when people start to talk about the SUVs and things of that nature, those are part of the way people get to provide services to our Plainfield residents. And that's an old story.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, uh now we're going to talk a little bit about culture. And I'd like to start with um Steve. Plainfield has a rich culture based on many ethnic groups. What will you do to encourage engagement by, for example, the Latinx population in our city governance? Would you name qualified Latinos and Latinas to head city committees? And how can we build unity across the city?
Uh that's a that's a great question. So absolutely. You know, I I don't see uh Latinos as any different for me. Uh we all are in a struggle together here in Plainfield. And I I'm I'm proud of the culture that we have here in 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 Plainfield. Much like uh the city of North has its Iron Balance section. Uh I think we need to develop our downtown as well so that, you know, if you want Peruvian or Colombian food, uh you know exactly where to go uh and to celebrate that heritage and that and that history. Um in terms of how we uh we we unify each other, i- i- it really is through culture and through the arts. Um we need to uh continue to create an arts district. You know, we've begun that with the Plainfield Performing Arts Center, uh which uh the the demand on that center was was through the roof and certainly would have been uh, you know, booked up had it not been for COVID. But it's places like there, centers like that, where people uh get to congregate uh with music and art uh and et cetera, and those are unifying things, esp- and and dance as well. Those are things that we all uh enjoy uh together. So as we continue to develop those things, I think it'll bring us together even further.
Okay, thank you. Charles?
Well, um with Steve that, you know, we are a very diverse um cultural city here. And we've already have a Hispanic Heritage um Commission where we encourage um our Latino brothers and sisters to participate. Um we also have flag raisings, where we all participate in the flag raisings. And we, you know, by interacting with the different cultures here, that's how we sought to bring people into city government and appoint them to different commissions that are here. And we do have Latinos on our planning board, we have them on our zoning board. We have them on the like this, the Hispanic Heritage Commission. So we are working with all um different ethnic groups within the city here to make sure that it is an inclusive process that we do. And our restaurants, when we had restaurant, we to show off the diversity of the restaurants that we have here in Plainfield.
All right, thank you. Robert?
Uh culture is already here, it's already rich, it's it's undeniable. Um I think that what we can do more of is just partner with uh uh our many, many residents. That, can you guys hear me? Okay, um that 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 that, well, the culture is already here. None of us make our gravy the same. Leaders in this community, we need to make sure that we are taking it upon ourselves to get to know our residents, their names. Ask them about their culture. Uh one mistake that a good friend of mine made when when I was at a Dairy Queen is um there was a gentleman working there, he had a Hispanic name, but he had a beard. His religion was Muslim. So it was up to uh the leadership there to make sure that they honestly get to know these people. An awesome young gentleman, very respectful, uh uh just a a great leader in our community. And and this is what we have to do. We have to make sure that the many, many people of different cultures can feel comfortable enough to connect with us so that they can personally invite us to their gatherings, their cookouts, uh their bar mitzvahs, uh their uh ki- case, the 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 quesadilla. I'm sorry, I mispronounced that, but that's what I have to learn as a leader. I have to get out in the streets and get to know the pronunciations, the different cultures and what they celebrate and make sure that they're comfortable enough to make sure that I also get an invitation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, David?
So um I heard it mentioned the Plainfield Advisory Commission on Hispanic Affairs. Um I'd like to see that activated some more. I um when it started off, it was a little active. I know it's volunteer, but you know, if there's a way to um activate that commission a bit. Also, I think there should be a full-time uh to better reach out as the city. There should be a full-time liaison with the community, um totally bilingual. That's their job is to communicate, you know, I know it's an expense, but personally, I think it's money very well spent. Um I've even, I I've heard that the the translations in city um from from city communications are kind of done by committee. I think those need to be more rigorous. I know people who have said that the translations are poor, that there's mistakes and stuff. I just think there needs to be an extra level of detail um paid to that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. Emily?
Yes, I I think we have a missed opportunity here in our in in our city due to the fact that we do not, that the YMCA has been closed for a couple of years. And that YMCA has a lot of facilities, there's a swimming pool there, there's a kitchen there. There's uh opportunities for people to go to classes, uh exercise, et cetera. And I think as more people come together in a space such as that, then they have more opportunities to share their cultures. Personally, uh I was a member of the YMCA here in Plainfield, but due to the fact that they did not provide uh some of the services that I needed, I attended a um uh you I became a member of a YMCA in another town. And there were a lot of people from a different culture there, but through our working to doing our workouts together, et cetera, we got to know each other on a more personal level. If we had our YMCA back um in our dish, in our town, we would have more opportunities to uh get people to to together. We would have opportunities to provide bilingual uh education classes for adults. We would have those classroom classes. And we will also uh be able to just get to know each other better. It's great when people have an opportunity to learn from another person's culture. And I think it would be beneficial for us to have a place that would provide that opportunity. Also, I think we could.
I think, I'm sorry, that's that's time.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, we have the next question. We're going to segue into.
There's a one rebuttal, please.
Pardon me?
It was a rebuttal here.
I, you know, I I'm gonna tell you. Yeah, but let me explain. You, a lot of times you put your hand up to do your glasses, you just hold it there like that and I'll be able to tell. Yeah, that's good. I'm not, I'm not intentionally ignoring you, but you know, I can't tell if you're just doing this, so.
No, I I could tell. It it's more like a matter of timing, cuz he's putting his hands up when you're looking down and look to the next question. So just put it up a little earlier, Councilman.
Yeah, just put it up like this. You can leave it there, you know, I'll see it.
Um in in reference to uh a question that was just made about a Y. The Y here in Plainfield was a private entity. And the Y was not closed by the city, but by individuals who are backing candidates right now. And they're trying to put the closing of the Y on the city. And they should go and ask their backers why they closed the Y.
Yes, Emily?
Yes, I I just can't understand why we would decide to spend or propose to spend two hundred, I mean, two million dollars on the pedestrian pedestrian mall instead of just making a decision as a council to purchase the YMCA so that we could provide more services to our young people, our senior citizens and and our bilingual uh population. I mean, it to me, it does not make sense to leave that wonderful building with all its facilities there. And now we want to build a, spend two million dollars, go into there for two billion dollars for a pedestrian mall. Why would we do that? It's better, the money would be better used to provide programs, services and activities to the residents of this state.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, I I want to piggyback on that. According to the administration, I heard at a council meeting, the pedestrian mall is still the plan. I believe I heard the council president say so. The pedestrian mall is still planned to go forward. Now, if you wanna say it's not in next year's budget or get, you know, get tricky with it, it is still in the plans as far as I've heard. Now, if you're announcing it now that it's not in the plans, feel free to do so.
Yes, Steve?
So it 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 certainly is still in the plans. Uh I think it's a good idea for one. Uh but what we've changed is how it's financed so that it's not a burden to taxpayers. It's going out to bid for developers. So, you know, uh the the bottom line is, you know, we listen to uh to the community and we we make adjustments uh uh as far as that. Um and also, just a quick point regarding taxes that I that that I misstated. The Board of Education did increase their taxes uh by six percent this year.
Okay, thank you. And David, and then we're gonna have to move on.
Yeah, we have to move on. I I just, I don't think that's a a change in how it's financed. Going back out to bid is maybe getting a better price, but it's still taxpayer finance, infrastructure loan. Um I don't think the way it's financed is changing. You're just hoping that maybe it'll be two point one million dollars instead of two point three, just to get out a number, maybe a little lower. But I I don't think, I don't think that should be a priority for the city of Plainfield right now.
Okay, we're going to talk now about the city's boards and residents. So this question is for Robert. The city's boards, zoning, planning, shade tree, HPC, et cetera, are an opportunity for citizens to become involved in the decisions of the city. What would you do to improve the diversity of the boards to ensure that all demographics are equally represented and seats are filled with the best expertise that Plainfield has to offer?
Okay, so I'm on the zoning board now. I've been on the zoning board uh since two thousand nine. There is diversity on the zoning board, there's diversity on the planning board. There's the, there's diversity on the shade tree commission and the Historic Preservation Commission. I would like to believe that we have some of the brightest and most intelligent people sitting on our boards. And mind you, uh we are volunteers, so we don't get paid to sit on these boards. And many times, uh we're we're in these meetings sometimes until after midnight. But it's our passion because we live in this community and we want the absolute best for this community. So, you know, uh quite frankly, being on the board and having been on the board for the past ten years, having been uh present for other board meetings. Having been uh present for other board meetings, I do know for a fact that all of us want the absolute best for our community. Plainfield has something extremely unique, uh, we're very special. Uh, and I think we all kind of want to keep it that way, we know what we are great at. And so we continue to be great, and so uh I must say, there is diversity on our boards as a whole. Uh, and we do, uh, we, we do a darn good job uh being on the boards. Uh, and many of us have been in the boards uh for quite some time, so, you know, uh, I, I actually love being on the zoning board. Uh, I learn a lot, but I feel like I give back to my community by upholding what's best for my community, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, I don't want, I want to uh give credit to how hard it is to get people to serve on commissions, it is a commitment. Um, it's, it's, it's not very easy. Um, but we have to make a strong effort to reach out to people all over, and it's always, it's always been a problem because um, you know. It's, it's people on the council and the mayor and such suggest people for these commissions and just, that's just the way it is, that's the way it's delegated down. Um, but we just have to make a, make a better effort to make accommodations. I know most of these commissions do meet in the evening, um, after work hours, seven, seven thirty, which is a great time um for most people. But it's just, um, you know, marketing the importance of them too, a lot of people really don't know they exist. So I think it's a lot of times it's the communications of these things exist. And if more people knew they existed, if we promoted them more, then you might get more volunteers. Um, a lot of people, myself included for a long time, did not know that these commissions existed.
Thank you, Emily.
Yes, I think that's a good point you made just now, uh, David, uh, we know of the existence of a lot of these boards. But we're not really clear about what their role and responsibilities are. Uh, just from the name Shade Tree uh Board, I would think that has to do with the trees in our community, making sure they're cool, that, that, uh, they're safe. You know, that, that a tree's roots are not growing up so high under the si- uh, concrete. That it becomes a hazard to people who are walking on the street. However, uh, beyond that, I think uh, beyond the fact of us learning or being. Given the information concerning the functions of each of these boards, I think we need to consider term limits. I think that uh for someone to be on the board since two thousand nine, I, as I, as we said, it's a volunteer position. However, uh, I think there needs to be some turnover on these boards, so that you get new ideas and new perspectives. Uh, from the new people on the board, so I think that would be in the best interest of these boards. Uh, and that will also facilitate more diversity in the demographics of the boards.
Okay, Steve.
Yes, um, uh, uh, thank you for this question, um, I also like to um, you know, congratulate everybody on our different boards and commissions for their service. Because it is very difficult work and, and they do um work for long hours and uh it certainly could uh. Uh, commend Robert for his many years of service, um, I think, um, you know, as you gain experience on those boards, you know, ma- many times they're not. Experts in a particular field, so it, it takes a year or two to really understand what's all, all that's going on. Uh, you know, the professionals on those boards are hired, uh, the, you know, the attorneys or, or the planners, for example. Uh, but the, 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 the others, uh, the commissioners are, are volunteers, so it takes some lead up time. So I, I wouldn't be for uh cutting off a valuable free experience that the city is getting uh in favor of term limits. But in terms of uh uh diversity, uh, you know, we make every attempts to be as diverse as possible. And make sure that all in uh cross sections of the community are represented, uh, you know. So we'll continue to make those efforts, you know, we, we know that it's, it's diverse and we can be more diverse and we'll just keep. Uh, doing our best to, to, uh, to ensure that it's diverse for, for this very important role throughout the city.
Thank you, Charles.
Well, our boards, um, I'd like to say, I served on the zoning board before I became a councilman. And then um was appointed to the planning board. Um, all our boards and commissions are on the website. And all residents are encouraged to submit a resume or an application of interest in serving on a board. And that's important because all the members of the board reaches out to everybody they know. And as we participate in different functions, we're always seeking out people who are willing to commit. To working on a board for us, and as Steve and Robert has said. Learning the uh planning board and learning the zoning board is not just, you know, I'm gonna come in today. And understand it, there are volumes of regulations and rules that govern. Um, how things are built, planned or executed in our city, thank you.
Thank you, Robert, you wanted to comment. I can't hear you.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
You're okay?
I'm good, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, this is getting really local, I'm not from your town, so. How do you plan to stop the motorcycle and ATV racing on the streets of the third ward? That has been going on for the last two years. Repeated calls to the police have produced no results. The ATVs and dirt bikes are not street legal and the majority of the dirt bikes aren't licensed. And the riders aren't wearing helmets. In addition to being very noisy, they are a danger to pedestrians, other drivers and themselves, David.
I've heard a lot about this um from constituents, just, you know, bumping into people, we can't knock door to door, but you know, bumping into people um even during this campaign. And um, it is a serious problem, um, I see it all the time myself. And it's, it's really done kind of brazenly, just right out in the open, it's. All I can, the only sense I can make of it is that it's an enforcement issue, I mean, I see it on major streets um in broad daylight. And um, something does need to be done about it, uh, enforcement, that's really, it's really that simple, um, and I hope it gets taken care of.
Okay, Emily.
Yes, I think uh the neighborhood approach to this issue would be uh. Something that we may need to consider, I think if we had more of our police officers who lived in town, say in the third ward and all of the other wards. Then they would be aware of the fact that these uh vehicles are sort of running amok in town. And so then we, they would go back to their, the police department and uh, uh, inform them of that issue. And then the police uh director along with the uh officers can come up with a plan. As to how we can curtail that type of uh activity in our city. It's uh very alarming when you're driving along and one of those uh. ATVs comes whizzing by and, and it's dangerous, it's certainly a, a hazardous situation, it's a safety issue. And I think if we had more police officers living in our town, then they would be aware of that. And perhaps give us opportunities to remedy that problem.
Thank you, Steve.
Uh, the, the, the dirt bikes are certainly uh an issue. Uh, but I, I believe that in, in that instance, we have to weigh it carefully, what, what, how, how we address this problem. My, my idea is to try to get families involved, you know, if you know you have a family member that has a dirt bike, you know. Try to convince them from that angle to uh, to, to not ride it, or you know, let them know about the dangers of them. Because it's a very difficult enforcement issue, because from a safety perspective. Our officers uh are not going to chase someone on one of these dirt bikes. Because first of all, they don't have helmets on, they're driving at a high speed, we don't want to have a high speed chase of helmetless riders. So, um, so that's, that's something that we want to make sure is not happening. Because that actually, you know, there was an instance where, um, you know, there was at least one fatality in our city. Uh, of an individual who, who crashed on, on, um, on a motorcycle, and my heart goes out to his family uh for that. Uh, you know, so, but, but hopefully we can appeal to the families, you know, to let them know, you know, th- these bikes are dangerous, you shouldn't have them on. Uh, as well as continue with our enforcement efforts, uh, you know, where we can, we need to get these bikes when they're stopped, and maybe confiscate them when they're stopped. Um, you know, that, that's probably the safest way to balance uh that.
Thank you, Charles.
Well, like people are saying, these dirt bikes and motorbikes are definitely an issue here in the city. Um, one of the ways we can address that issue, and like Steve said. You can't chase these bikes because not only are you putting the bike rider in danger, but you're also putting the public in danger. When at a high speed chase, if they hit a rock, hit a pothole or something, they could hurt, harm an innocent bystander. But it's more of education and the community talking to their neighbors about their sons. Because for some reason, our children believe that they're entitled to do just what they want and they don't have to conform. And we as parents are going out um funding these different motorbikes. And many times, they aren't even the young kids, they're young adults who are ro- racing up and down the streets recklessly. So having police live in town isn't the issue, the issue is how do we communicate? And let people know that they are endangering not only themselves, but also other people.
Okay, Robert.
So these knuckleheads, uh, the, the nuisance of the sound, uh, it's definitely, uh, it definitely affects your quality of life. But at the same time, these are our sons uh that are riding these bikes. And the, what people think is the solution is actually worse than the problem. Because if you chase these guys, they're gonna run, they're not gonna pull over, they're gonna blow intersections, they're gonna go through traffic lights. And I'm just thinking about uh the many, many New Jersey transit bus lines that we have driving through our town. The pedestrians that we have crossing the streets at our crosswalks. I see them all the time, I pass them all the time, there was a time where I was actually riding my bike. And I was with a colleague and we wanted to make a left, and there was about ten of those bikes behind us. And all ten bikes stopped and they let us cross. So to their credit, they do show respect, however, it's something that we don't want in our community, we don't need in our community. And so we have to collectively work on solutions, because chasing them is not a solution. Apprehending the bicycles, it's solutions, it's a solution when they're parked, but are they always, are they gonna be parked together? When it's time to do a crackdown or a sting on these motorcycles, on these dirt bikes, on these four wheelers, uh, doing stunts in the street. Very dangerous, however, we have to work on a viable solution, a solution that's gonna work. Because it's one generation, then it's gonna be another generation in a pat, that, that, that fad passes down the generations, uh, sorry, I, I got the.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, David, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that I was not advocating uh high speed chases of people on these motorbikes or high speed chases of anybody. I think it's a good principle that unless, that eh, high speed chasing a car, truck, bike, anyone, it puts everyone in danger. Um, that's not what I meant when I, when I said enforcement, and I don't think automatically that just everyone would just go flee from the police. Um, as soon as, I, I don't believe that everyone would do that, but just, just a clarification.
Okay, Emily?
Yes, uh, also, thank you, yes, uh, I did not imply that uh police officers chase. Uh, young people who are riding ATVs, the whole issue here is that we live in a community. And I think what we should uh embrace is the idea of it, community engagement. If my neighbor is a police officer and I talk to him about, oh, there was some ATV activity on our block. Then I don't expect him to go and chase the person down, what I would like to see him do. Is be a part of a team in the police department to look at how they can best address that problem in the district. And also maybe even engage the young person, uh, when they see him uh at the uh CBS or uh the drug store. I'm not the drug store, but another uh business now and say, you know, I heard, saw you the other night.
Thank you, Emily.
You're welcome, so it's not chasing.
Thank you, okay, alright, now we're going to get down to business, so to speak. And we're gonna talk about government and economic development, so we're gonna start with you, Emily.
Thank you.
Please, please name one economic development strategy you would advocate for during your four year term if elected. If you'd like a little bit of, of, um, I'll give you a little bit of meat on the bone there. How would you uphold the checks and balances between the legislative and executive branches? What do you see as the council's role in the redevelopment plans for Plainfield?
Thank you, uh, economic development is key to the success of our city. And one of the things that we have to do is determine whether or not we want to continue to provide uh pilot programs in our district. For development whereby uh we given a developer an opportunity to develop a project here. And with the pilot program, they pay uh, make a payment in lieu of taxes. That does not increase the tax revenue in our town, so I find that to be somewhat of a negative uh. Community economic de- development uh program. And the other thing is that I think we need to look at what type of developments we want to bring to our towns. We need a, a grade A supermarket in Plainfield, we don't have one. So we spend our, our revenue for food and other things in Wachang, North Plainfield, etc. But if we look at developing economic, uh, economic development from the perspective of providing the needs of the community. And also look for an opportunity where we can hire our young people to work in some of these stores. Even our seniors to work i- in some of the new development that actually uh brings about uh new job opportunities for our community. So not only are we getting better services, but people in our uh community have income. So that they can live a, a better quality of life in our town. But just to build uh apartment buildings where the average weight is about two thousand dollars a month. And uh, the question is, how many people in our town can afford to pay that kind of uh, of rent? So we, we have to change our idea about economic development.
Thank you, Emily, Steve, how about you?
Uh, one strategy Emily alluded to it is, is pilots, which uh, I'm, I'm largely in favor of pilots. Uh, certainly not blindly, we gotta look at the terms of each pilot, uh, but these pilots are, are what they're called, uh, payment in lieu of taxes. Um, is, uh, I think that they play a vital role in a, in a town like Plainfield that needs to spur development. You know, I also think of pilot kind of like, um, you know, with a stove, you have a little bit of flame that's there that can ignite the whole thing. That's essentially what a, what a pilot does. Um, so uh, it, it's not correct that uh, that it doesn't increase the tax base, it certainly does. You know, we may have an undeveloped property that may maybe get twenty four thousand dollars in taxes a year through usage of a pilot. You know, over the course of, of thirty years, you know, we've been able to, you know, maybe increase that, increase that to a couple million. Uh, so we're certainly, uh, although they do pay a discount on taxes when, with a pilot, they certainly do pay more taxes. Than would be if there was no development there at all, so, you know, I, I agree with that. And, and so, and another responsible way to do that uh is, is what we've done with the Station Act Grant, which is uh. It is a tax credit property where we have, you know, affordable housing, so it's not, we're not only building for those at high market rent. But we're building for those uh to pay four hundred to a thousand dollars, uh, maybe a little bit more uh in rate.
Right, thank you so much, Charles.
Um, to development, pilots are a very useful tool to attract developers to a city like Plainfield. I heard alluded to that Plainfield has two train stations and developers want, well, those two train stations have been here for thirty years. And those developers were coming until you put together a team, as we have with the administration and the council. Who have a vision that will bring developers, developers want to go where they know there's strong leadership. And that leadership translates to them in that they're investing their money. As Steve said, with a pilot program, you only get X dollars off of a. As Steve said, with a pilot program, you only get X dollars off of a land. Once you put a pilot in, they're paying us X plus. So we're getting more than the taxes, we're getting plus taxes, and that's how you will stabilize taxes. Also with the pilot, if the developer starts to make more money than originally agreed in, they have to give that money back to the city. So we are making a ton of money, and pilots throughout New Jersey are the way to spur developments in urban environments.
Thank you. Robert?
Topic being economic development, and economic development as a whole. And so it's, it's, it's everything that has to do with stimulating the economy in the city of Plainfield. Um, I don't wanna leave out and not have be a part of the conversation, our single-family developers. Our developers that build single-family and two-family homes from the ground up. Uh, making sure that we educate the community uh on things that they just don't know about. It's not anything that's taught in school. And so we have to make it our business as leaders to make sure that we involve the community, but we make sure that we help the community understand. So like, for instance, pilots, some people don't know that pilot is an acronym. And so we gotta do more education. We have to look at all ways and get input, not just from the usual suspects, but from everyone. Uh, as far as our affordable housing, let's talk to people who already live in affordable housing. Let's see what their challenges are. Are they happy? What do they need more of? So we just have to look at all four corners of economic development and look for more ways to stimulate the economy in the city of Plainfield.
Thank you. What do you think, David?
Um, if Mr. McCray wants to take credit for market forces that are building at every single train station in New Jersey um and, and just make it a local thing, that's fine. But let me tell you, as someone who has worked in multifamily, transit-oriented uh architecture for years, this is going on everywhere. And to be fair, most of these municipalities are using pilots, many of them are. Um, um, and, and the developers kind of leveraged us all against each other, so they can get the best deal. That's how it works. I wish towns would work together, like we got the One Seat Ride Alliance. Well, why not the alliance on how do we handle development together? That's neither here nor there, only got a minute and a half. Um, but, you know, we don't have to accept any development that comes. I think a robust economic development platform uh involves not just apartments, multi-use. And we, those two train stations, like I said before, are assets. You don't have to take the first deal. In fact, they may appreciate in value because um, we're talking thirty years, these agreements are. What kind of infrastructure advances beyond one-seat, one-seat ride will there be on that uh, on that train line? So I, I think that we need to be very careful with these deals. And also, what about using local contractors? People, the community complains constantly that they're not getting work on these jobs. And then let me try to squeeze one more thing in. The Quinn at Sleepy Hollow on South Avenue, usually I've worked on dozens of these projects. There's always, when there's a pilot, there's a provision for affordable housing. So the people living in garden apartments on East Front Street can benefit from the new um construction by getting slightly lower rent, not twenty-four hundred dollars, seventeen hundred dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, Steve, you wanted to comment?
Yes, I just had a rebuttal. So just, just a quick, quick point. Uh, pilots are really important because it costs the same to build in Jersey City as it costs in Plainfield. So in order to convince those developers to come to our town and invest, we need to provide some incentive. Uh, another thing that developers look at is they look at how professionally the city council is running. You know, and the way it has been running, it's been running professionally. It's been partnering with the administration to provide some predictability. And we haven't taken every first deal. Uh, our Economic Development Committee is very rigorous in its work. Um, it's just that it's not dramatic at the council meeting.
Thank you, Steve. Emily?
Yes, I'd like to bring to everyone's attention the fact that uh our economic development has included building a Wawa between a seven-eleven right next door to each other. And the question becomes, is, is, is that really responsible investment in terms of economic development? And then the other issue is that since we've had these pilot programs, this is the first year that this, this town did not have a tax increase. So we, if they are providing so much revenue, why is it that our taxes go up year after year after year? It sounds like poor planning.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Charles, you'd like to comment? Yeah?
Um, pilots do not come in to play in the tax base until a project is about ninety-five percent complete. That's one. Wawa is a major chain that is coming to Plainfield, where we have not had any major corporations come. And those same people who were out campaigning against Wawa did not want a um youth center, like head start center, to be built in their same community only a block away.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna have to move on now. Um, but I'll kind of let you continue with this. Um, as a member of the governing body of Plainfield, please name one strategy you would support to increase fiscal stability in the city. And we're going to start with Steve on that one.
Okay, well, one way to create fiscal stability, um, you know, I, it, for, for me, in terms of money, it, it always goes back to continue to invest in our city. Uh, and there, there's so many opportunities uh to do that in, in, in a town like Plainfield, where we have an industrial area uh that uh is outdated. You know, no longer do we have, uh, do we live in a world where, where, where that major industrial zoning is needed? You know, now we need, uh, you know, we need technologies uh in those areas to replace it. So we need to be looking at, at those opportunities to bring in new industries, cutting-edge industries, uh, so that, uh, so that we can, we can leverage that. And I think through investment, I don't think we achieve stability by simply cutting spending, because that would then cut services to residents. And, you know, people in Plainfield that, you know, they, they, they want their services, you know, they want their parks. Uh, they want programs for seniors and youth, so we don't wanna cut that, nor do we wanna cut our workforce. Uh, so we have to continue, continue to invest in ourselves with the industrial areas being one of the main opportunities.
Thank you, Charles.
Yes. One of the things that we could do, and we're now seeing a great interest in developing our cities, we now need to go and bring our school system along. Because investors and developers look for a workforce that they can tap, that will be able to handle the vigorous um demands of their corporation. And right now, our school system is lagging behind the rest of the city in its development. We have, you know, just underperforming schools. And that needs to be addressed. And once that is addressed, we will be able to see a real good boom in how we move our city forward.
Thank you. Robert?
As Plainfield, let's just be who we are. Uh, we have a great economy. Um, our real estate is in high demand. It's like we're selling gold in Plainfield. We have uh an influx of new homeowners. And our new residents are very diverse. So with that said, so long as we keep making a way for homeowners to come in and live in our town, wanna be a part of our town, wanna spend money in our town, making sure that our town continues to stay safe. We keep the dollars locally within our town. We support our businesses. We don't let our businesses fend for themselves. We had a Chamber of Commerce. We no longer have a Chamber of Commerce, but our business community is not suffering. So we need to make sure that we're finding solutions to partner with our business community to help them become better and making sure that we are promoting homeownership. Making sure that we are educating everyone in our community about the importance of homeownership. Making sure that we are teaching our children that you pay your bills before you eat. You be financial, you be responsible with your money. And you stay in the town, and you give back to your community. And this is where your money is gonna be spent, because there are businesses that want to earn your business. And so we just have to make sure that we're listening to everyone. That is the ultimate solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. David?
I think one thing, there's a lot of things that could go towards fiscal stability. Uh, I think one thing, we gotta market the city better. Um, I know some years, no, very recently, uh, the city had commercials playing in Connecticut, for example, on TV. Um, I think we gotta get to new media. And it's not even, you know, marketing isn't just what you think of as commercials and such. Um, I, I wrote a post recently that they should name Clinton Avenue after George Clinton. It doesn't sound like marketing, that's something that should be done. Um, it makes perfect sense, right? Um, you know, Plainfield's own, show him his flowers. But also, you know, you do something like that, now you got John Parelles here, who's the, the music writer for the New York Times. And this, the whole ceremony and everything might cost five thousand dollars. But what's the price, what, is that worth it to have a New York Times writer in your city? Is that worth it for that sort of coverage? And as Robert Graham said, being who we are and showing people who we are. So I, I, you know, I think we gotta market the city better. And also fiscal, I, I hate to bring it up again, we're not really, the pedestrian mall. You know, we can't be spending two point, two point three million dollars on things that don't have a parking study. I mean, that's just not fiscally responsible. And I was at the council meeting, there was no parking study gone. Uh, Mr. McCray said Tahoe's are old news. They're not old news to me. He was on the council when, when they were bought. So three hundred fifty thousand dollars of uh gas-guttling SUVs to service the people, even though you could do that in other sorts of vehicles. That, that, that to me is not fiscal responsibility. Neither was the mayor's big salary increase. So, yeah, cut and wasteful spending, but also marketing our city and showing people who we are.
Thank you. Emily?
Yes, I think one of our major issues in terms of fiscal stability is in our city is that I think we need to look at uh making our city more attractive to people so that they would love coming into Plainfield to uh go to the restaurants that are so widely marketed uh by our, our mayor. Uh, one of the things that troubles me is that outside of the third ward, where we have Cedarwood Park, which is a very nice park, we, we don't have a lot of other facilities throughout our city that would attract people here. So what we have, uh, the people who would come into our city to go to the restaurants, but if they have to park their car in a parking lot that looks like it's a, a part of the third world, uh, that's not gonna make us attractive to people coming from the outside, and that impacts our revenue. And that, and revenue we need as far as fiscal stability in our city. So we just have to look at the big picture and then come up with ways to make our city more attractive to other people so that we can get revenue into our city.
Thank you. Charles, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, in reference to the pedestrian mall, that will be paid for by developers, not by the city tax um monies. And that was brought out at a city council meeting. If Mr. Rutherford had been there, he would have heard it.
Okay. Yes, Steve?
Just a, a quick point about, um, you know, I, I, in my, one of my jobs is as a real estate attorney, and I do a lot of closings and for people who are moving inside of Plainfield and work with a lot of Realtors, uh, and, and people even outside of Plainfield. And one thing uh that I believe inhibits Plainfield is the educational system. Uh, and that would equate to a lot of dollars in people's pockets if we had a great educational system. People would really wanna move here, because we have the same housing stock as in Westfield. It's just that our education is different.
Emily, you wanted to comment?
Yes, uh, I see, it seems that the uh issue of the public education system uh is a recurring thing throughout uh our discussion tonight. And one thing I want people to recognize is that uh, the uh, the district has been in a very low place in terms of our achievement, student achievement, and that's been going on for forty years. And not only that, but then the state of New Jersey Department of Education has always underfunded the Plainfield School District to the tune of about seventy billion dollars this year.
We're gonna close with, thank you. We're gonna close with David, and we're gonna move on. David, you had your hand up.
Uh, so the developer, you're, you're claiming the developers are paying directly for this? This is not coming from the municipal budget? Why'd you have to approve the funding then? And why are you going out for bid for it? How, how, what do you mean the developers are paying for it? I wanna know. Please let him answer. Please let Mr. McCray answer. Okay.
We're gonna move on.
Developers are not paying for it. Let's move on.
Okay. All right, the next question has to do with quality of life. Quality of life issues. Please name one strategy you intend to use to enforce property code ordinances such as those banning satellite dishes visible from the street. But probably more importantly, as a council member, what constituent services would you provide or support? And we'll start with you, Charles.
Well, quality of life is very important. And here in Plainfield, we formulated the Quality of Life Task Force, which goes out, and that task force is comprised of members from the police department, fire department, code enforcement, social services. And they go out and take a look at all the issues that are brought to the attention of, to the city. That in itself will go a long way in improving. Now, when it comes to satellite dishes, the city hands, hands are tied to a degree, because that's regulated by the FCC to where a satellite dish can be placed and can't be placed on the property. So those sort of things have to be dealt with legislatively. And we, as a council, back our Quality of Life Task Force, which goes out and I engage people in my community on a constant basis. And whenever they bring a quality of life issue to me, I take it to the appropriate people within city hall to have it addressed.
Okay. I just wanna remind you that I also asked you, as a council member, what constituent services would you provide or support? So that's part of the question. And we'll go to Robert.
Again, uh, I'll, I'll start with, we have to be who we are. We are a very, very small town. Um, I think collectively, all of us know half the town. And so it's about listening to our residents. A lot of our residents may not want retaliation if they make a complaint on a quality of life issue. They may not know where to turn, they may not know who to call, so that there won't be any retaliation. I think we, as leaders, need to just always hit the streets, walk the streets, knock on doors, even after election, even when it's not election time. We need to make it our business to make sure that we know the names of our residents. We need to make sure that we are listening to our residents. We need to make sure that we are driving through the city streets to see imperfections in our town that we can actually do something about. Uh, so my, my, my answer isn't long, and, and as far as involving my colleagues, it's just about calling each other, it's about communicating, it's about making sure that we get along, no matter what we disagree on.
Okay. David? Can't hear you. You're muted.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I'm sorry. All right, direct constituent services is, is an issue. Um, I, I know in the, in the old days, it was the Democratic City Committee person who lived in every neighborhood, who people would tell things to, um, small things that the city, that the city could fix. Uh, we don't live in that world anymore. Um, and also, there's this seven council people. We don't live in, we don't have that, that uh, that social, we don't live in that social world anymore. So, and also it's kind of partisan. It was, um, you know, the Democratic City Committee. I think that there needs to be a systematic way for people to anonymously make complaints. I know logistically that would be hard, but uh, you know, we have to, we have to pump up the block associations, you know? That, those, those sort of entities definitely handle uh constituent services. But we also need a systematic But we also need a systematic way, maybe even online, where people can report things. I know logistically, again, it probably creates a nightmare, but there needs to be some way besides just you happen to know your councilman's number or find it online and you give them a call. Not everyone's gonna do that. And as others have said, people are afraid of retaliation.
Okay, thank you. Emily.
Yes, I'm glad that this topic is a part of our discussion tonight because I'm concerned about quality of life here in Plainfield. One of the problems we have is that code enforcement seems to have dropped the ball throughout our city. There are a lot of sidewalks, there are a lot of areas in our city that we know that the code enforcement unit is sleeping at the wheel. Because if they, part of their job, from my understanding, is to make sure that everyone is safe. People can walk down the street safely and not be concerned about getting injured. Another concern for me is health services in our city. Although the COVID virus began in March, it wasn't until about two weeks ago that we were made aware of the fact that COVID testing would take place in Plainfield. And that's very disheartening because I think we had a very large number of people within our city who did have the COVID virus. But we have to find, we did not have access to testing here in our city. Another thing is infant mortality. And among the black and brown community, everyone is aware of the fact that that is a very serious issue. So we need to look at finding ways to ensure that everyone gets proper healthcare within the city of Plainfield.
Okay, thank you. Steve. You have your mute.
So in terms of constituent services, I mean, first and foremost, you know, all, all of our numbers for, for the council are on this, this city website. But, you know, you can reach me anytime via, via text or phone call. My number is nine oh eight eight seven two zero five five three. You can call or text me anytime about any, about anything. Also, innovatively, I'd like to see the city have, you know, perhaps mental health officers, you know. I know those can be individuals that, that respond to the, the different needs of, 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 of our community. Because mental health is, is something, especially after COVID-19, is something that, that, that we really will need a lot of support with in getting through the trauma of the pandemics and the trauma of four hundred years of slavery. Or since, since we came off of the boats. The satellites are protected, so that those aren't able to be regulated by the city. And finally, you know, there, there is a project in the works that, around Hannah Atkins. I've seen renderings and so forth for a community center over there. We need to provide constituent services over there. And I'm committed to bringing a project like that to fruition in my next four years.
Yes. Charles.
As far as the pandemic and COVID is good, there has been a mobile testing unit going on in Plainfield for quite some time. And there's a robo-call that has been placed that COVID testing is available, free of charge to all residents behind Scott's Drugs in parking lot number seven. And any individual, if you don't have insurance, just have a form of ID, you can get COVID testing. But we've had a mobile COVID testing facility here in Plainfield for quite some time now. And that's in partnership with the county.
All right. Okay. Part of that question. It started out asking if you agree or disagree that Plainfield needs an acute care facility? If you agree, how would you push for this kind of service? So I'd like to ask you that, that question. Robert?
So the answer is yes. Anything that we can make local. Because we are Plainfield. And there's, there's very little things that I wanna go outside of Plainfield for. So the answer is yes. We should make it available. It should be available. And it needs to be specific to the immediate Plainfield area, not just the city of Plainfield, but the immediate Plainfield area. So my answer is yes. Anything that we can bring to our residents that bring value to our residents and our homeowners and our children, I would always say yes to.
Okay. David. You're muted, David.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I won't do it again. I'm going through it again. All right. So I believe that we should have an acute care facility. As everyone knows, we had a hospital that we no longer have. But we still, we, we need healthcare here in Plainfield, where a city of fifty thousand people and our health options locally are, are slim. You know, I don't believe that's something that the city government can do themselves, so it's always complicated. You know, admittedly, I don't think there's just a magic wand out there to do some of these things. But certainly to advocate any way possible, including going up the chain to other lawmakers to, to make that happen.
Thank you. Emily.
Yes, I certainly agree that we need acute care facilities here in Plainfield. It's very important to the stability of our community. Another element that we need to look at, just as an aside, is the homeless people who somehow are in our city. A lot of them live at the train stations in our city. At one time, before the Y U C A closed down, that, that was a place that they could live. So I think acute care, an acute care facility is a wonderful idea. It's something that we need to look at and we need to also look at that in conjunction with what causes acute, the need for acute care. So we need better health facilities and we need to take better care of the homeless in our community.
Thank you. Steve.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's a simple answer. I mean, it's absolutely. I mean, we, we, we as Plainfielders would benefit from any type of facilities or, or more additional services that will be provided to our residents. I mean, the question is, how do we pay for it? Or how, how do we encourage someone to, to, to build that? How do we invite them to our city? And the way that, 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 that we do that is through strong, responsible leadership. When people look into a town and they see excessive infighting on the, on the council or unpredictability, then those aren't neighborhoods that developers or, or people who, who might want to plant their flag in the city wanna come to. So it, it's really incumbent upon us all, as leaders in the community, to, to just be professional about how we go about our business, so that we can attract increased opportunities for our residents.
Thank you, Charles.
Yes, acute care is very critical to any community. And that is something that was taken away from Plainfield at a much higher level than local government. But as a community, we've just approved a project here in the third ward at the old Muhlenberg Facility, which will house over two hundred thousand square feet of medical use that's being built right now. That will somehow impact the care that the residents of Plainfield are demanding. And there's also a CDS that's gonna be built right across the street, which will then give people access to medicine. And as far as the homeless are concerned, we have a task force that goes out to the train station on a continual basis and tries to encourage the homeless people to seek services. And they will provide them with the resources to get the services they need, so that they are no longer homeless. That task force is made up of our social service workers and our police department and some volunteers from the community.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to talk a little bit about taxes. What will you do to rein in county and local taxes that are driving people out of Plainfield? Do you have plans to introduce property tax cuts? And how would you do that? And we're going to David.
So property taxes, to give proper context, they're high everywhere in New Jersey. No one in New Jersey has a one thousand dollar property tax bill. And the, the way we, the, the way we stop increasing taxes or even decrease taxes, I know this year, there's not much of an increase. But again, these are services that are only okay. They're only cuttable because of COVID, and that may not even be the case. Wasteful spending. We gotta, we have to rein in the wasteful spending and we have to cut better pilot deals. Even if, I understand, look, everyone, all these towns, virtually, I, I've worked on a few jobs that were not pilots, but virtually everyone does these pilots. But we have to have more in it for the residents that are here now. And also, you know, talking about, it goes into zoning a little bit. If you're trying to develop the South Avenue Corridor, you don't put a Wawa on it, Wawa gas station. Now, I understand Wawa's whatever, Fortune 500 company or whatever, whatever it is. But I don't care if it's Wawa, Texaco, Jersey Oil, John's Gas, you don't put a gas station in a transit oriented zone if you want that area to reach its maximum potential and eventually lessen taxes.
Thank you. Emily, what would you do?
Well, what I would do is, I know that we, it's very unlikely that we are going to decrease the taxes for our community. But I think it would be helpful if we worked together to develop a plan that would manage the tax revenue more effectively. We talked about the gas guzzling of major Tahoe vehicles that were purchased by the city. I don't think taxpayers are very satisfied or happy about that. The other thing is trips to Hawaii at the cost of the taxpayers. So I think we're using the money in a way that is not beneficial to the taxpayers. And I think we need to address that and develop better ways of spending the money and managing the cost. We should look at hiring people and not really having a particular function that they provide to the city and the citizens. If they're not really producing anything that's beneficial to the citizens, then maybe we don't need that new hire in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve.
You know, we, we gotta work in partnership with, with all, with, with county and state officials. As well as our Board of Education, you know. You know, it, it's unfortunate that, you know, although we were able to find a tax group a zero percent tax increase that the Board of Education increased there, six percent. But if we can, can work hand in hand with them, then perhaps we can, we can all get to, to, to reduce the tax burden on taxpayers, for example. Because I, because I know that, for example, the county did pass an overall county budget that represents a zero increase as well. We all, we all need to do our part to, to, to keep that down. That's it. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Charles.
Well, one of the ways you impact tax is development. We, if you take a look at the development that is being proposed here in town, it's mixed-use development. And those development revenues will come to help stabilize the taxes. One area we can look at is that, no matter what happens, the school board gets twenty seven, twenty eight million dollars, and they have a two hundred and eight million dollar budget. If the city reduces its taxes, the school still gets twenty seven or twenty eight million dollars. Whether we collect eighty five percent of tax revenues, thirty percent, the school board will get twenty seven million dollars. So we gotta find a way to make our school more efficient, so that they don't tell us that because of an underachieving school system, if we throw more money at it, then we'll be able to do that. And when you have a good school system, developers and people wanna move, which adds to your tax base, which then will help other people's taxes. The more people you have paying taxes, the lower your tax rate will be.
Thank you. Robert.
In the art of negotiating, I always looked, I always look for a win-win. And so in, in our situation, as a taxpayer in the city of Plainfield, I want the best bang for my tax dollar. As a city leader, I wanna make sure that I'm exploring all grants available from our county, from our state, to offset our costs as taxpayers in the city of Plainfield. To make sure that we have everything any other town has, and even better, although I live in Plainfield. When I go to Fanwood, Westfield, I don't wanna think or feel that they have better services than I do in Plainfield. So as city leaders, we need to make sure that we're giving the most value to our taxpayers. We're exploring every line item in the budget. We're looking to bring costs down. But very, very important is that we make sure that we are exploring grant opportunities, which will help offset our personal costs as taxpayers. But just to make it very simple, I want the best bang for my tax dollar. I've been in Plainfield since two thousand and four. All I, all I want is to be happy in Plainfield. I don't wanna go to another town and, and see what I don't have in Plainfield. I wanna go to another town and say, wow, I have that too. I can't wait to get back home to Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily wanted to comment, and I just want you to know that we're coming up on our last question once Emily makes her comment. And then after the last question, you'll give your, your closing statements, okay? So Emily, go ahead. Give your comment.
Thank you. I think we need to explore ways to have more mixed-use development in our city. I think that that would be very beneficial. And as far as the tax base and the impact that the public school, twenty seven million dollars has in our district, it's interesting that we need more money. As I stated, we are underfunded. Yes, we are struggling in some respects with student achievement. But the more, I think we need more funding for our school district, and that is an issue. If we've been under, we have been underfunded for several years. And this year, we thought we would get the tax, an increase in the revenue for our school district. But we experienced a thirteen million dollar tax cut. So now we're trying to get in a position where we will be able to continue.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, this is the last question. Now, when I'm, I'm gonna read it, it's long. You don't have to remember every word, but just get the feel of what I'm reading to you and absorb it, and then you can answer. And just so you know, we're going to start with Emily for this question. Okay, if elected, what legacy do you hope to leave by the end of your term? And what is the most important goal for city government for the next four years? Describe the city as you know it and explain how you will serve its constituencies. If elected, what legacy? That's the main thing. Do you hope to leave by the end of your term? Emily?
Yes, the legacy that I would like to leave with the, the city of Plainfield once I'm no longer a city council person, my legacy would be a legacy where we learn to work together in the best interest of the citizens of Plainfield. That we really listen to them. I'd like to, for the, the city, I'd like to develop a survey that is presented to each and every citizen in this city through email or by mail to ask them what are some of their concerns. And having received that feedback, then I would work as a team, along with the others, council members and administration, to ensure that we try to be some of the concerns that the people, our constituents have, the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. Steve. Are you, is that it? Steve? Thank you.
Yes. So the, the legacy that I would like to leave is, is one that has provide, provided a steadying, stable, strong leadership in, in, in the, in the city of Plainfield that has led to a period of sustained growth and improvement of not only our physical grounds, but also for our youth. I'd like to also leave a legacy of being a role model for youth. A lot like what Robert said, you know, we need to all be exemplars for the community and the kids. Um, you know, we need to all be exemplars for the community and the kids uh, that are there so they can see all that is possible. You know, I commend all the, uh, the ladies and gentlemen that are here in this, uh, in this forum tonight. Uh, we're all professionals uh, who, who have had or have had uh, or who have careers uh, that are all doing the, the thing in the community. And I know everybody has a heart uh, for Plainfield and wishes to provide the great service. Uh, we just need to continue uh, in, in doing that. So I hope to have a, a legacy of somebody who's led a positive example for Plainfield uh, as it uh, experienced this sustained period of growth and improvement.
Thank you. Charles?
I would like to leave a legacy of a positive, stable tax base, a community where there's a lot of services for the residents and a community where the council is working with each other and not trying to sue each other because we can't get along as done by our Board of Ed. When they sue a board member because that board member doesn't agree with them. We need to be a cooperative board and I do not want to see um, board, council people coming on the council that are just adversarial to be adversarial. Therefore, you know, just a place where my children and my grandchildren can come back to and feel very comfortable and know that they're safe and they can grow.
Okay, thank you very much. Robert?
I want my legacy to be known especially by our children uh, that Councilman Graham knows my name. Uh, Councilman Graham came to my graduation. Councilman Graham came to my birthday party. Uh, Councilman Graham inspired me to be the best that I can be. Councilman Graham never let me believe that I could not achieve what others can. I want to make sure that my involvement in this community is going to be lifelong and that I can lead by example, that I can really uh, uh, allow our children to see themselves when they see me to help them understand that their challenges are actually their strengths. I want to help them understand that there is nothing that they cannot achieve. I want to make sure that our children are full of hope. And I want to make sure that every ward in this town feels like they are the best ward. I want to make sure that every child in this town uh, grows up having the best experience growing up as a kid uh, that even their parents and grandparents have ever had. I want to make sure that our city of Plainfield has no racism.
Beautiful. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to have our closing statements.
Oh, wait, wait. I didn't get to answer that question.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, it's fine.
David?
Um, so my answer is simple. Community center for the kids, point blank, period. And it means a lot of things. That means we will have reined in wasteful spending. It means that we will have stopped neglecting the youth. It means that we're no longer paying huge five hundred thousand dollar wrongful termination suits every year. It means that we finally asked the developers to contribute something to our young people. So that's what I would like to see in four years.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, that was quite a question and answer session. Now we're going to have our closing statements and we're going to begin with Steve.
Thank you. Uh, once again, thank you for the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. Uh, I'm running again uh, because I want to continue to work for you. Uh, I'm proud to have worked with the administration uh, to bring strong, stable leadership to the city that has uh, spurred uh, all of the development and improvements. That I have to give credit where credit is due. Um, you know, the MAP administration has been more productive, seen more uh, improvements, uh, obtained the highest credit rating possible. Uh, but I know uh, that it is not done. Uh, but it also needs allies on the council uh, to continue to work for you and continue to uh, improve at the rate uh, that, that, that it has. Um, you know, even uh, our uh, opposition has remarked that developers want uh, to come to Plainfield. Um, and uh, there's a lot of hard, hard work that has went into that and we just want to continue uh, to do that. We, we are not done. Uh, we certainly want to have that uh, youth center uh, be developed uh, because I have to agree with David that that is something that is important and we're working on that. And we'd like to continue to work for you. So voting in, ends on July seventh. Uh, we ask for you to vote, uh, column B uh, for Biden, Bonnie uh, and Booker uh, so that we can continue to work for you.
Thank you. Emily?
Yes, thank you uh, for this opportunity. I appreciate the uh, League of Youth Women's Voters' uh, support for the election in the city of Plainfield. And I'd just like to say that I love the Queen City. As we move forward to improve our city, I would like to serve our constituency by exploring methods and opportunities to enrich our quality of life. I would like to support a freeze on additional multiple dwelling projects and initiatives in an effort to pursue opportunities for the development of a quality supermarket within the Queen City. I will work collaboratively with the P M U A to develop a sliding fee scale for waste removal services. The fee scale will be based on the number of occupants per household instead of a flat rate for each household. Hope this would promote a fair and equitable fee for services. I would like to explore the possibility of developing a plan to allocate a percentage of pilot but development revenue to the Plainfield Public School District. And I'd like to offer this example, in the city of uh, Woodbridge, they have key pilot programs. However, the mayor and the council agreed to provide twenty eight percent of that revenue to the school district and that has made a major difference in that school. So that's what I'd like to see happen here in Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. David?
Um, I want to say, I, like I said before, I believe Plainfield is at a crossroads. The market forces are at our doorstep. Will this be the Plainfield of the people or the Plainfield of the big money interests in county and state politicians? Uh, I want to see that community center, not just for the center, but as I said, everything that that represents. Uh, there's one person right now in the city council who came in on a grassroots campaign just like ours. And there's another who also votes with the best interest of the people. With two more, we can have a council majority to represent the people of Plainfield. Um, working in advertising, I have nothing to gain professionally by this, quite the contrary, in fact. Uh, my involvement in Plainfield is one of service. And I can say the same for Emily Morgan and everyone else on column A. So I hope we can have your support. And if you'd like to learn more, please visit PlainfieldStrong.com. And if you want to learn even more, visit Union dot N J progressives dot com. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Robert?
I want everyone in Plainfield to win. I want to be the leader in Plainfield that everyone can identify with. I believe that all of my challenges over the years, all of my experiences, it did not make me bitter, it made me better. All of my experience that I've gone through, it made me into the man that I am today. I think a lot of hard decisions that have to be made, I'm very comfortable making hard decision. So if what I said resonated with you tonight, I need your help on my campaign. If what I said resonated with you tonight, if you can identify with me, when your children look at me, if they can see themselves as an example as to what success looks like, then I need their help on my campaign. My battle position is nine E. E stands for equality. I want to make sure that everyone in Plainfield wins. Every ward in Plainfield wins. I don't want to push agendas, I just want to come up with solutions. I just want to talk about solutions. I only want to think solutions. All I want Plainfield to be is the best town in the state of New Jersey in towns amongst similar demographics. I just want the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Charles?
Well, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this forum. It was very enlightening. One of the things that I want to do is, and want to see and developers like to see is consistency. If you have a consistent, strong leadership, that is a legacy that will go on forever. That is what we need to keep here in Plainfield. A consistent leadership along with improving our schools. Our schools for so long have been at the bottom that we need to bring it up and throwing more money at it isn't the answer. It's called accountability and that's what we need. I'm on line B with Joe Biden, Bu- um, Booker, Cory Booker, um, Bonnie Watson Coleman, Steve Hawker Day, all the Union County um, freeholders. And we're asking for you, vote line B for the best. And we are the bravest and we are the team that's going to keep Plainfield moving strong, not taking it backwards.
Well, thank you very much and thanks to all the candidates for participating. And I'm very pleased to host tonight. It's been a pleasure. And I'll let, I'll let the Plainfield folks take it away now.
Thank you, Mrs. Zimmer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
If uh, the participants on, some of the audience want to stand by, we have some closing remarks from Catherine, our secretary here in the Plainfield League of Women's Voters. So Catherine, could you take over now?
Yes, hello. Thank you, everyone, for participating. Thank you, candidates, for helping us understand your positions on myriad topics. Thank you, Toni Zimmer, for moderating. It takes a very special commitment to the democratic process to stand before a lively audience and diverse groups of candidates to ensure that voices from all points of the political spectrum are heard. And thank you, audience, for sending the League of Women Voters your questions and for dialing in to this remote meeting. We hope you've gained some insight into the candidates' positions, helping you to make informed decisions for the July seventh election. This year, as you may know, is special. All registered voters have been sent a mail-in ballot. You may fill in the ballot and take it to a post office or you may deliver it to the county clerk's office. Details are at VoteForEleven.org. This year, the League of Women Voters of the Plainfield area celebrates its one hundredth anniversary. For a century now, we've been, all been, we've been all about empowering voters and defending democracy one election at a time. Now it's your turn. Go vote. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks again, Toni. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Oh, my God.